Okay, I call. Meeting is being recorded. Call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Tonight's meeting is to allow the board to discuss local option levy for Western Lane Ambulance District. Laura, can you take role, please?
Director Russell.
Here.
Director Murphy.
Here.
Director Yasni.
Here.
Director Farnsworth.
Here.
And Director Webb.
Here.
So we do have a quorum. I'd like to now open this meeting to public comment. We do have one citizen who has signed up. And just a second, Mr. Pilcher. Okay. So, Ms. Pilcher, welcome. You have three minutes and you can begin when you're ready.
Hey, I'm RJ Pilcher, 87842 Sandra Street, Florence, Oregon, 97439. I'm a member of the Western Lane Ambulance District Budget Committee. Here are some facts. Fiscal year ended June 2016, audited restatement, net loss 315,00418. Fiscal year ended June 2017, audited net income 71,992. Fiscal year ended June 2018, audited net loss 148,597. Fiscal year, June 2019, audited net loss 151,586. Fiscal year ended June 2020, audited net loss 221,228. Five-year loss from 2016 to 2020 was 764,837, or a loss of 152,967 per year. Purse unfunded liability, 348, or excuse me, 34,428,367. Capital Improvement Fund depleted within nine years. I find it very disturbing that the Board of Directors is thinking about hiring an outside firm to convince the public using taxpayers' funds to pass an option levy, the districts at the district's cost of $60,000 to $100,000. The idea of using operating income or taxpayer funds to do this is beyond outrageous. Why don't you just be honest in the press release that the board did not have the backbone to impose the last and final offer with the ranking file in contract negotiations to right the financial ship? So instead, you're anticipating coming to the taxpayers for an option levy ahead of schedule. Then it, when it is successful, then asking the taxpayers to combine the district with the fire district at a combined levy that is in excess. I just think that we need to just tell it like it is in the press release. Let them know that you don't have what it takes to get the job done, a negotiating table, and let the taxpayers make up their mind and save them $60,000 to $100,000 in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pilcher. Now we have a presentation from Patrick Singh with Public Affairs Council. Patrick, you are up.
Thank you, Chief. I'll start with the introduction. I'm here with Dylan Frederick in our office, who manages our communications. And then I, I work on a number of things in the office. Lobbying, help out with communications, and then kind of project management, which is kind of what this falls, falls under. So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about what our firm does and who we represent. And then I am guessing that folks have our, a copy of our proposal that, has that been sent, sent around, Chief?
It, it was. They, they should have a copy.
Okay, great. And then Dylan will kind of go through the highlights of that. And then, of course, we'll, we'll be happy to answer any questions. So our firm, Public Affairs Council, we're based here in Salem, where we handle kind of all aspects of government affairs. Lobbying is probably the biggest piece of our business. We have roughly a little over 30 clients ranging, wide variety of clients ranging from Lynn County, City of Newport, as some of our public clients, to the Airport Managers Association. We represent Boeing, Salem Health, Coke Industries. And the, we also do strategic communications. As I said earlier, project management, we run a number of campaigns.
Dina, the speaker is muted.
And, and then we also have a research wing of our business under, it's called Nelson Research, which has for the past, oh, maybe 25, 30 years or so, been one of the top survey polling entities for local governments and campaigns. So a number of special districts, fire districts, school districts, city and county governments use our research wing for polling for instances such as this with, with levies. We're doing one for Deschutes County right now on COVID procedures and reopening. And so, so it's a wide variety of stuff. How I, I think got connected with you all is prior to me joining Public Affairs Council, I have spent the last number of years also working in campaigns and at the legislature. I actually worked for, for those of you who've been around a few years, State Representative Gene Cowan, who represented a portion of Florence. So I've been to Florence a number of times in that capacity. That was back in 2007, 2011. And during that time, I worked with somebody from the Special Districts Association to consult on, I don't remember the exact year, but I know I worked on the Sayusaw Fire Campaign to Annex the City. And then I think the second one was either the renewal of one of Sayusaw's fire districts levy, or it was a, or it might have been a Western Lane levy a while ago. I'd have to go back and look in my records. So it's kind of good to be reacquainted with you, you all again. So as you saw in our proposal, we, we are proposing kind of a, a combination of services to include everything regarding communications and outreach all the way down to the detail of mail and voter outreach for information campaign. That would not be an advocacy campaign, as you would see in the typical lawn signs and things like that, but just, uh, just to provide voters with information from the district. And then a large portion of, of what we propose, obviously, is the survey and polling, which we think kind of gives the base of discussion on, on all the messaging, but it also gives you a good pulse of what your voters in the district think about the district, about the levy. You know, there, we can include a number of questions in there for you to address issues that may have brought up, such as issues that have been brought up by the gentleman who provided the public comment today. So Dylan, I think, can go through some of the aspects of the proposal. And then, and then we can answer, answer any questions.
Good to meet you all. I appreciate you having us. I actually have a, my background is in a combination of marketing and sort of a brand marketing approach to public affairs types camp, of campaigns. And so I've done campaigns almost nationwide with different organizations and local government, and states in the Midwest, and now in Oregon with Public Affairs Council. But the gist of the, the plan outline, as you can see here, is sort of, as Patrick mentioned, an integrated approach that uses both digital and traditional sort of communications tactics to help build on a narrative of the positive work that you do and the impact that it has within local communities. You'll see from the outline here, too, that we sort of build our narrative through digital, using social media, a little bit of paid advertising there, and then the core basis of the campaign, sort of moving into the utilization of direct mail, which is what we have found in 99% of the successful campaigns that we've done. Informational-based campaigns for districts in the past, using sort of the, some sort of anchor informational pieces that are eight and a half and 11 by 11 trifolds and flats in congruence with sort of the, the digital approach, where the messaging is just continually reinforced about using narratives, but also sort of facts, information, and examples of the positive work that's done. So I have dug into sort of the target audience metrics and broke those down a little bit, but have a holistic sort of overarching view here from our target audience section here. But also laid out in specificity, some campaign timelines and sort of benchmarks that we would expect from the majority of the campaigns we've seen in the past, and sort of how things unfold over time, using both digital, traditional, and some types of letters and op-eds. With that, I will just sort of open up for any of the questions that you have, unless Patrick wants to mention any of the.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Dylan. Yeah, I think we'd be happy to answer any questions or go into more specifics that folks want to point out as well.
Yeah, Patrick, if you could address, I know I sent you that, that question earlier today, but yeah, where does the funding come, where can the funding come for a campaign like this?
Sure. Thanks, Chief. And that's a great question that, that we, you know, we, we have to deal with this with every public entity that we work on with some of these messaging campaigns, because there's, there's, you have to have that distinction between information and advocacy. So the district, as a tax paying entity, can, can fund an information campaign that's fact-based, that does not involve any advocacy of any, any type. So the district, if you choose to hire a consultant and do the messaging around a levy campaign, you can do just about anything up to saying, "Vote yes" for this particular measure. So all the aspects of our proposal could be, could be underneath an information-only campaign. What we also do to kind of make sure that we're following all the guidelines as well, is for some of the bigger pieces, like the mail and other messaging, you know, any, any flyers that we would put out, we will run those through the Secretary of State's Elections Division, so that they can get another set of eyes on it to say, "Yes, this is, this is fine." An example, I remember from working with you guys in the past with Chief Buchanan, and one of the levies we worked on is, you know, some, somebody in the district took a picture of, of some firefighters talking to kids or something like that. And the Secretary of State said, "Nope, that, that actually plays into the emotional factor, may get somebody, you know, kind of, kind of convince somebody to want to vote for a measure." But if you had a picture of all your firefighters and ambulance personnel in front of the, the fire station, that would be okay. So we said, "Chief, go out and, you know, get a picture of all the firefighters in front of your building there." And that was part of some of the mailings we used. So that's kind of an additional check that we have. So, so all the information campaign, you know, op-eds, things like that, as long as they share the factual information about the campaign, about the levy, and don't advocate one way or another, you can encourage people to vote in the election. You can say, "Vote by," you know, whatever May, the date, the date is. You just can't tell them, "Hey, vote, vote yes." What the board members, obviously, since you are elected, can do, and what we would encourage is in civic-type meetings and organizations, obviously, it's a little different in this COVID world, but if you're presenting to a Kiwanis Club, or, you know, Rotary, or whatever, you know, usually it's a good pair to have, let's say, Chief, you, you show up and you talk about the district and the levy from a factual deal. And then maybe a board member or another member of the community is there with you to then say how important the measure is and why folks should vote the way that they vote. Depending on the, I mean, in, in a lot of renewal campaigns, and we looked at some of your recent data, you know, I don't know if you necessarily need a side of the campaign that says, "Vote yes," and do lawn signs and all that kind of stuff. If a survey, if, if we do a survey and your, and the survey says, "Okay, well, we don't have the support we need to comfortably pass this without an advocacy campaign," you could have that, you know, you could have an advocacy, a "Vote yes" campaign. We can help with that, but the funding for those pieces and the "Vote yes" and, and everything would need to come, obviously privately, and not be funded from the district at all.
I've had good luck with the bargain unit, the, the union buying those types of signs and putting those out. So I would think they would be involved if we, if we go forward here.
Yeah, and I can, so I recently, about a year ago, I served in your position on the Marion County Fire Board, Fire District Number One. I filled out a term, so I didn't, but we, we ran a levy as well. It unfortunately failed, but so we, we did a lot of our communications and outreach through the district. So district paid factual information. And I think the union paid for the lawn signs. Unfortunately, I think we would have won if we would have had a more robust advocacy "yes" campaign. But yeah, that's, that's when you, you know, on the "Vote yes" side, that's when you want to draw your union and other business contacts throughout the, throughout the community and voters, too, to, to chip in.
What about the fact that we're not entirely funded by just tax paying, because we do collect fees from insurances for our services provided?
Yeah, there are, as far as I know, not any limitations to any of that, unless you have specific grant funding, or if, if you have strings attached with any of your funding from outside sources, then, then obviously you want, would want to, you know, wait, look at those regulations. So if, if you get any grant funding that says you can only spend it on this, obviously, that can't go towards maybe a levy information campaign, or, or paying a consultant, or anything else, but that would, I think, be pretty standard among other restricted types of funding that you may or may not get.
So would it be right to, to say that because we receive taxes regardless of our service fee income added into that, that we're legally restricted from anything other than informational campaign?
That's, yes, that is correct. The district would only be able to participate in an information campaign.
Do you usually see a PAC formed with these two? I mean, is that typical for other, other things that happen, or?
Yeah, forming a, forming a PAC. I mean, it would be something we would recommend if, if you're, if we did a poll, if, let's say you hired us and you did everything in our, in our plan, including the survey, and the survey came out to be, I don't know, a good number these days is, if, if you're, if your initial benchmark poll is showing less than 55% or so support, then usually supplementing with an advocacy campaign paid for by a PAC, political action committee, would be suggested. And that's where we'd want to get into the signs and everything. Again, not paid for by the district, but by the private community.
I have a question. And I don't know if you know the answer, but could you address why there have been so many public levies that have failed recently? I know that Marion failed, Oak Ridge failed, Lane Fire Authority failed. Do you see any particular theme or reason behind these levy failures?
Thanks, Larry. That's a good question. The, you know, I think, I think COVID definitely has had, has had something to do with it. We haven't drawn that exact conclusion to that yet, but I mean, I think anytime folks see a downturn in the economy, you know, they start to tighten up their, their wallets a little bit. And any new tax measures that come on, that's going to be a target. I, I know with Marion, I, I was actually really surprised with Marion, after I got off the board, that they, they went out for a second time and lost, even after the wildfires that had happened. And it was, it was very slim margin, so I, I don't know if you can really attribute that to anything other than, you know, maybe they just need to do a better job of marketing. But yeah, it's a, it's, it's something that I think stresses the importance of doing a survey and a poll, because you can then get the pulse of the district and the voters. That's something Marion County did not do. They didn't do a poll of any sort and just kind of went into it blind. And, and I think that's, I, I know you all are considering whether to put this up in May or November or another election, and, and that's something that can help with that, that decision as well.
I would speculate, too, the majority of those districts, I don't think, would, had a benchmark in the beginning. That's usually like sort of a fundamental piece, because it's your blueprint of which of those combinations of conditions. One being maybe COVID, one being the timeframe and sentiment that people are voting in.
Hey, Dylan, we're having trouble hearing you.
Sorry, I have a microphone here and I wasn't speaking into it.
I was saying, those, neither of those districts that I'm aware of actually started with a benchmark poll, like Patrick said. And so that's usually your blueprint moving forward to sort of identify what the combinations of conditions that exist, whether it's COVID or the sentiment moving in, whether people are sort of fatigued by the level of taxes that they're being asked to to tax, or, or whatever it might be. Having that benchmark in the beginning is definitely a strategic advantage, too, avoiding that as a, as an obstacle and a pitfall down the road.
Patrick John Murphy. How effective is social media in this campaign? I guess I don't understand how you would reach a very large audience.
So the social media aspect of it is important, because it's gotten better, actually, at its targeting. And so we aren't guessing as to who we're targeting with the message. We actually upload the lists ourselves. So of the 14,346 eligible voters within the district, we will know, we'll have these segmented into different audiences, and, and we'll know which person down to the 200 are responding to which messaging and why. So it used to be a little bit more of a shotgun approach, where you would have to upload dozens of, tens of thousands of people at a time, and then hope that your messaging is working. But it's not anymore. I think we, we get down to really a microcosm of which messaging is hitting who and why. So it's important, because I guess together, maybe as a standalone, it wouldn't be as significant, like in Marion County's case, but combined with other medium, it helps to reinforce the messaging and sort of play the same thing out and allow people to hear the message into the segmentation of which audience that they're in.
Rick has his hand, they've raised.
Oh, yeah. Well, I thought I'd try that. Let me ask. We, the board has talked about having a strategic plan update, and part of that plan would be, could be polling the community. And your proposal includes a poll of, I think, up to 300 people or something like that. Could we, if we went this route, could we combine in our questions some of the things that would also help us beyond the campaign with strategic planning? Or is that, does that get into mixed messaging? Trying to think, will it leverage this work into our strategic plan?
Yeah, I, I think there's, there's definitely a possibility to combine some of those efforts, and especially with, if you're looking to combine the two districts in the, in the future as well, that could potentially be in it. I'd have to get back to you on the specific, or we'd have to work out some of the specifics, because I know in the, in the proposal, we kind of refined it to, you know, because you only get a certain number of questions, depending, you know, on how, how long you want to keep somebody on the phone. And you almost pay per minute or per caller you, you do. So we, we refined it to basically just what the, what a levy, a normal levy would be. But if you have other needs that you want to, I guess, seek the pulse of the community on, we can definitely kind of incorporate things into that. So that's a, that's a, and, and I think that would give you some more framework on, you know, where to go with both a levy and also your district combination efforts as well.
One more question, if I could. Can you go through the campaign timeline and tell us your thoughts on gut feeling on, on a May, a May versus November?
Yeah.
It looks very tight to me.
Sure. Yeah, it is. And Dylan, I'll, I'll go through the, kind of the timeline. I would say generally, even though it is very tight, you know, and you guys will have to make some decisions here. May is really the best time for these types of campaigns. You get a more refined voter, you know, these are folks who know who they're voting for, for school board and fire district and things like that. And in an off year like this, if you are waiting for November, not, not only, you know, nothing's scheduled to be in, in the ballot in November this year. So not only are you having to probably pay extra for that election as a district yourselves with Lane County, you are kind of at the mercy on whatever else may jump on the ballot. And in this year, with a long legislative session, you know, a very polarized political environment, both nationally and here in the state, I would say there's probably a good chance that there may be a referral to voters of some sort of, you know, I'm going to, I don't know where it, all the details are at, but let's say cap and trade, you know, very contentious issue. If the legislature tries to take it up and passes it, it may get referred to voters in November, and you don't want to be on the same ballot as something like that. Because you will draw out every anti-tax, and it's likely to be a tax measure that comes on, like cap and trade on, on a November ballot after a long legislative session. So either you push forward and try to go in May, or, you know, you could try in November. It'd be a lot tougher, or you're waiting till the next year to do, you know, an actual midterm election. But Dylan can go over more of the timeline. Yeah, so specifically why the, the timeline is so compact is that you usually look at about a 12-week period in terms of how well that the messaging will saturate. And so you have three months, really, to get your message across, and with the multiple platforms that you're utilizing with the campaign. Launching on February 1st is, or at least within that week, is probably the, the best bet to make sure that you have enough repetitiveness with the message, but also that you're able to sort of hit the number of ads and the, and the number of timeline that you need to before the May election. And in terms of the May versus November, yeah, I agree with Patrick. From what I've seen particularly, to the, the most important variable to consider, I think, is the cross-pollination of an issue landing on the November ballot that will either set people in a different sentiment than they would be in May, or would sort of affect your cause based on what they're going to vote for at that time. So May is just a, a different type of voter. You have people who are falling in different propensities in terms of their commitment to vote on the ballot, and whether or not they'll vote for your cause or not. So I think there's a little bit of wiggle room, I guess, to, with the, the timeline, where you would have some flexibility to add a week or two, because you, you've got that three months plus, about an additional two weeks. So we got a little bit of room to, to wiggle with, but I guess this would just be my ideal timeframe if we were to launch and, and keep. we got a little bit of room to, to wiggle with, but I guess this would just be my, um, ideal timeframe if we were to launch and, and keep things according to the books.
A question on the May timeline, you show two mail drops after the last day to mail in the ballots. Are you only targeting people that would drop in the ballot boxes? Because you show May 4th is the last day to mail a ballot. Then we have a May 10th and a May 12th mail drop that are $6,500 each. And I don't think there will be many people that haven't mailed their ballots by then.
Yeah, that's a good point. I, one of those I think would be before May 4th, uh, but usually one, at least one. And I think the, the last one is usually the, the simplest of the mailings, the six and a half, uh, the six by 11, flat, uh, because it's a reminder that if you haven't turned in your ballot already, feel free to do so. But that third mailing, I think would, um, you're right, have to fall before the 4th.
Thank you.
Director Farnsworth.
So gentlemen, I think you do a really professional job and it's a very nice looking proposal. What would you characterize the chances of success if you have a split board where one or more directors oppose the levy?
That's a great question. I mean, I, you know, ideally you have a unanimous board, um, who was out in the community talking about the need for the levy and, um, why, uh, why folks should vote for it. Um, I mean, if, if there is a director that is not on board, you know, I, I think one, um, we've seen, uh, when you have a, a board member or board members who, who are unsure about the levy, oftentimes that benchmark polling or survey that you do at the beginning helps address some of those concerns. So, uh, you know, as your consultants, we can work with board members who and staff who have had, uh, questions or concerns about district operations. And, uh, sometimes those questions can be answered in, in the survey. If, and if, and sometimes, uh, those board directors will see the results of the survey and say, well, I may have had, you know, this thought about, I don't know, staffing at the district and how I don't think it's adequate or whatever. But if you have an overwhelming number of people who think the district's doing a great job in all aspects, then we've seen the survey change, change minds of people as well. After the survey, when you go into the campaign, obviously, again, good heavy unified voice, but if you don't, um, that, that doesn't necessarily mean your measure is going to pass it. A lot of, lot of, um, things can come into play, the, the directors, uh, standing in the community, their influence and, and you know, um, are they the type of person that votes no on everything that the board votes on? Or, uh, you know, if they're an upstanding community leader, then, then yeah, there are some issues there that, um, that then, uh, we can help work through a little bit, but then also in that case, um, more of an advocacy campaign, um, will help supplement, uh, the efforts as well.
Well, speaking for myself, I would be the director of maybe more than one that would oppose the levy at this point. And let me just share my perspectives about that. We have excellent directors and we have excellent staff here at the ambulance district. But our cost structure is just unsustainable and does not represent a good value to our taxpayers. Uh, we recently went through labor negotiations that I was intimately involved in, and we failed to correct the cost issues in our district. And so if we kick the can down the road with another levy without a full comprehensive strategic plan, there's no possible way I can support the levy and would actually advocate against it. Because I see the failure of the levy as being an action item that would force the district to change the way it does business. And I mean that out of all due respect to those who feel differently. But I think that, uh, the timeline with a levy that's not due until 21 to 22, that's our last year of the current levy. It seems like we're jumping the gun. We're giving ourselves three elections to accomplish what should be done in just one election. And I'm concerned about spending 60 to $80,000. That's about half the price of an ambulance, I believe, on advocacy and information to convince taxpayers to give us their money. And I disagree with asking taxpayers to give us their money when we haven't properly managed the money they've given us. So it's a quandary.
Director Russell, you got your hand up?
Yeah, um, Larry pointed out some levies that failed, but I believe most of them are brand new levies and not just renewals. I'd like to know what the, um, track record of the state is at this point of just renewing existing levies. We have not decided if we're going to just go for renewal or for an increase, but I'd like to know the track record for just a renewal.
We, we can get you the exact statistics. Uh, the renewal is, at, at the current rate is, is definitely a lot more successful regardless of, uh, which election you have and, you know, regardless of COVID. Um, I can share, you know, Marion first went out with an increase and that failed. And then came back and went out with, uh, just a renewal at the current rate, which would, rate, which still would have resulted in, um, some layoffs. And that failed as well by a slimmer margin. So, um, it gives you a little bit of an indication, even the renewals that are failing are failing at a more slim, slim rate. So of course the levy failed. They had to lay off, I think, um, 12 or 13, uh, personnel. But, uh, yeah, generally renewing at, uh, whatever the current rate is a lot, uh, easier, uh, for both the district and, and voters. I mean, it's, it's just an easier thing to message.
Uh, Mike, what?
How do you address the timeline? Last time we went out, prematurely, essentially, if you wanted to call it that, we went out after four years of the existing levy instead of five. Uh, we wanted to have the, have the comfort of knowing that we're going to have cash flow or sustainable cash flow for the next four or five years. And also if it failed, we would have a fallback position before we're out of money. Meaning if, if Larry had his way and the levy were to fail, we could restructure the district, uh, without having to do it as quickly as a last chance vote. We can make a decision to go back and vote again. We could make a decision to do it a different levy metal, model. Or we could make the decision to, to, uh, blow things up and do it differently. Uh, I'm very comfortable in going out early. I'm very comfortable in going out in May of this year. I think it's the proper time to go. That's me personally, but I, out of your experience, does it make sense to have that kind of additional time to recover, recoup and, and readdress it if you have to go back again?
Yeah, I think I, I, again, um, kind of stressing the importance of the, of the polling, uh, that you would do because that would, that would give you the indication of, you know, if you have, if, if you did a poll right now and it said 80% of the people in the district support renewing a levy, uh, there would, that would give you a very strong indication that you can and probably should go out in May while popularity is high and, and get, get it done. If that result comes back and it says, you know, 55% or less or less than 50%, which is even worse, say, yeah, we're not, we're not sure because of whatever reason, because of we don't like the district. We don't like the way they manage money. We don't like COVID. We don't, you know, whatever reason, uh, folks give. And we do have some, aspects to collect some of that data in the poll, then we could say, well, it, it doesn't look, it's not as strong, uh, or maybe it's kind of borderline. We could say, well, we'll go out in May and if we fail, then we have time to then come back with a, with a plan and reorganize. Or we may come back and say, we can't, you know, the numbers don't support a May election. You need another six months to a year to rebuild whatever it is that you need to do in the community to build the trust among the voters and educate them more about your, the district before, um, before going out and asking them for, uh, more money or renewal. So, um, I think that is a big piece of the polling would be a big piece of how, uh, your messaging and timeline and everything would, um, play out for, for you all.
So your intention would be to get the poll numbers back before we have to put the measure on the ballot and write our ballot measure. We'd have an initial polling back to understand where the community is?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It's again, pretty tight timeframe. Um, but, uh, we can, we'd have to check with our polling folks, um, but they, they can launch a poll fairly quickly and we get results. Usually it takes, if you're looking at a, I think, sample size of 300 with the size of your district, we're probably looking at, um, you know, having the survey out in the field, making calls and things like that. Uh, we, we have online features now too. Probably Dylan, maybe three, three or four days usually will get that result. So, you know, a week or more to develop it, a week to run the survey. And then, uh, you know, I would say in two to three weeks, you can get, uh, the results of that, uh, survey and then be able to kind of make, make a decision from there.
Well, Patrick, it is the Tuesday, February 9th, we have to submit a ballot title like 80 days ahead of time. Is that the last day we could? I mean, that's going to be really, really tight if that's when we need to put the ballot title in. That's less than three weeks from today.
It is, uh, yeah. I mean, you know, ideally, um, I would say if there was unanimous consent to the board to, yep, we want to go for May and everything, the, the survey just kind of helps confirm some of our messaging and allows us to develop that. I mean, it's a little, little different if, if you're in the position of, well, let's see what the poll says and then we can decide. And then that, you know, definitely hampers some of the timeline a little bit. I mean, I, you know, we'll obviously move as quick as we can from our end and, and I could probably get that answer to you tomorrow is in terms of how quickly we could develop and run a poll. Um, but Dylan may correct me if I'm wrong here, but my guess is it would be two, two, two to three weeks to, yeah, we could probably do it in two. But that's still only a week to make that decision.
Can you submit a ballot title and then pull it afterwards?
Yeah, yeah, you can, um, you can. Uh, and again, we want to check with Lane County elections on the exact, um, but yeah, I mean, that happens every now and then where you file something and then, you know, I think they give you a little bit of time afterwards to withdraw, withdraw it.
Any other questions for PEC?
So I guess on your proposal, could we break it into chunks and say, if we did the survey and we found out that we needed more time, then would we only be looking at the survey research and a little bit of the campaign management? And then we could come up with a different timeline on the rest of the budget? Or how would that, how would that work?
Yeah, um, that's essentially how it would work. I mean, um, you know, I, I think on the proposal, we listed it out as a monthly cost, but if the survey came back and, and, you know, we decided you as the board wanted to go out in November, you know, there's, there's not a ton of stuff we're going to be doing, um, campaign or messaging related between now and let's say July or August. So you do the poll and then we say, okay, we'll, we'll maybe come back and start the actual messaging of the levy campaign, uh, later in the summer, um, you know, pre-Labor Day. You know, there's some, I mean, I, some messaging we can always help out with. I mean, if you're looking for ongoing social media management or information campaign about what the district is doing, um, not related to levy and start to build that, uh, trust and education in the community. If the survey says that, then, then we can obviously help out with that too. But it, we could adjust our proposal based, based off of, uh, based off of that. But it wouldn't be like the six grand per month until November. It would, we, we would adjust if, if the timeline needs to be adjusted.
I think going out early now would be smart because, uh, the community is aware of what our response has been to the COVID situation through the district.
Yeah, I think the, uh, both COVID and the wildfires have been, um, you know, except for a, a few districts out there like Marion, but you know, it's in the times of crisis when the community sees that you've been doing all this work and responding, is usually when the community generally will, will come back and say, yep, that's exactly what we had called and needed them for. And we want to continue receiving those services.
Any other questions from directors? Or Patrick and Dylan? Cena, thank you gentlemen. A very nice presentation. And, um, so I now have, you guys can, you stick around or you can take off. Um, but I'm sure we'll be in touch. So now the directors, um, I have small presentation, which is going to actually cover a lot of what we just talked about. Um, I just, uh, put together some facts. And then we'll have a discussion at the end. Everybody see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me get my notes here. So I wanted to just briefly go over some historical data on our levies and then, you know, at the end we'll open up discussion by the directors. So hold your do we or don't we questions until the end and there'll be plenty of time for directors to, to give their opinions. Uh, but certainly if you have any questions on the data I'm going to present, don't, don't hesitate to, to ask. So, uh, just give you some historical perspective on the various elections concerning, uh, West Lane Ambulance District and their levies. And there've been a total of four that I could find, um, but I added this, this first one in, in 1996. And in that year, there was a request by the district to update the tax base and that had to do with measure 47 and measure 50, which set maximum levy amounts related to the tax base. That's when we had all those, uh, property tax issues in, in the state of Oregon. And in 1996, um, that request failed. It had 41% approval. So I saw rural fire protection district had the same question on, on the ballot at that time and theirs passed. City of Florence tried the same type of ballot measure and there's failed. Um, so there's, you know, e- either could happen at that point. Then at some point, the permanent levy rate for Western Lane Ambulance District was set at 32 cents per thousand of assessed value. And that, that's where we are today with the permanent levy. And then on November 2nd, 2004, district requested a new local option levy. That was the first local option levy they requested. And that was at 10 cents. So that would be on top of the 32 cent, um, permanent levy. This was a four-year levy request at that time. Uh, your levy request can be up to five years, but they went with a four-year levy request. The measure passed with 71% voter approval. And then four years later on May 20th, 2008, district went out for a new local option levy. This time it was at 25 cents for four years. And that measure passed with 63% of voter approval. And on May 15th, 2012, the district imposed a new local option levy at 45 cents for five years. And that measure passed at 53 and a half percent. So that was, that was very close. Uh, even though this was a five-year levy, district proposed a, a measure to renew levy after only four years. And, and Mike brought that point up was, uh, I think with that, um, decision to go early was based on the 2012 results. And the thought was, you know, have multiple chances in case it failed. So on November 8th, 2016, measure to renew levy at 45 cents for five years. Um, it passed with 78% approval, which is, which is an outstanding approval number in, in election. So the takeaway is very small data set is that, uh, mayor November work, and I know we've talked about some calendar, calendar issues. I'm just going off of this data set. Increase in taxes, receiving less support over the years. That's not, not surprising. But, uh, a renewal is, is likely to be, be well supported. So I'm just, um, I also looked into some examples of most recent public safety levies within Lane County for some other agencies. We talked about, they had, you know, talk, told us about Marion County. We talked about, they had, you know, talk, told us about Marion County and some around the state. I just looked at Lane County and I only looked at public safety related measures. So nothing with schools or libraries or other non-public safety organizations. And there were three last year, all were in November. Had the city of Oak Ridge, which had a new five-year local option levy at $2.73, which is incredibly high. But this supported both fire and police. That failed. Lane Fire Authority proposed a new five-year local option levy at 50 cents. That failed. And that was about a two to one margin that it failed by. And then the city of Springfield had an increase of their five-year local option levy from 36 cents to 38 cents. And and that passed. So not a lot of data for the county, but gives us some, some, some data. And then I wanted to show the budgetary impacts of our current local option levy and what would happen if if we didn't have that. So what I'm showing on this graph, percentage of, I can get my pointer up here. Graph versus the percentage of our total revenue, which comes from transport fees, which is the top line. The local option levy, which is this middle line. And then our permanent levy, which is the bottom line. So typically our, our transport fees represent about 50% of our revenue, total revenue. Local option accounts for anywhere from 23 to 26% of our budgeted revenue. And then the permanent levy is closer to about 17 to to 19%. And it's typically, it's, it stays around that level. We had a little blip in 2018, 19. And that was just because we had a, about a 25% decrease in transport revenue. So the percentages changed a lot. Now, the slopes of the graph don't represent a decrease in in transport revenue. It just means that tax revenue can increase 3% per year. So we get an up slope in that because we're predicting a smaller increase in transport revenue. It's sort of hard to predict what transport revenue is going to do. We think it's going to hold fairly steady where it is now. But again, that's just, just a guess. Just to look at actual numbers for for current fiscal year, local option levy brings in about 940,000 as compared to 653,000 for the permanent levy. And then we have 1.7 billion for for budgeted transport fees. And again, these are budgeted amounts. A year to date, we've received about 95% of our local option levy, about 99% of our permanent levy. I'm not sure why those are different, but they are different. And we're about 64% of our transport fees for the year. And I'm also showing what we have budgeted for personnel services, material services and capital for fiscal year 21. And my, my point by showing these numbers being that if we were to lose the local option levy or if there was a decision to not have a local option levy, there would actually be major cuts in all three areas. However, the majority of the cuts would probably have to come from personnel services. There are just not enough room in material services and capital to cut, to make up that, that 940,000 from, from the local option levy. So potential election dates, and we talked about these, May 18th, 2021, November 2nd, 2021, and May 17th, 2022 would be our final opportunity. I say final and that, that would be the last election we could use to make sure that there wouldn't be an interruption in tax revenue, assuming that we're going to go out for for renewal. In all these elections, we would just need 50% plus one vote to pass the measure. So now we're going to move to the discussion phase and and the questions, I think the relevant questions, and there could be others, that's fine. But do we ask voters to approve a local option levy? Two, if we do, then do we renew it 45 cents or do we set some other amount? If the decision is to go forward with a local option levy measure, then what election date should we target? And finally, assuming we go forward with local option levy ballot measure, do we use a consultant specifically? You know, one of the, the two consultants we have received proposals from. And I know we've had a lot of discussion on this, this anyway, but I had come up with a staff recommendation. So staff's recommending that we submit a ballot measure for a November 2nd election for renewal at 45 cents. I know Patrick had a good argument for going with May and I'd be okay with that if we use a consultant. And I think if we do, do go in May, then the need for a communications consultant increases. If the board goes for the November election, it's just a renewal request. Potentially, we can handle this internally if we've had to. I've, I've been involved in several of these types of elections. I've always had communication consultant help. But it's something that I think that, that we could put staff efforts to if that was the decision of the board. So that's, that's my presentation on the facts. John, how did you want to handle discussion?
Okay. Yes, first I would like to get the board to decide. Are we going to go out for a levy? And would you like to me poll each one of you board members for that answer first? Or how would you board members like to give me that answer?
So is the question just whether or not to go?
Yeah, I want to start, start if they're just going to go out for a levy.
So you're not specifying how much or if it's just a renewal or?
Oh, I want to start first if they're just going to go for a levy.
Okay. You want Lauren to take a roll?
Well, I'd suggest you go around for comments, John, to each board member.
We're, we're going to get the comments, Rick. I, I need to do this in stages so we stay on track. Or Rick, are you in favor of going out for a levy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
Okay, so we, we are going to go out for a levy. We are committed to that.
What was your vote, John?
Yes, we, we have to have a levy.
Okay.
And then I would like to talk about how much. And Rick, would you like to start that conversation?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest we go out for renewal. And I won't spend a lot of time, but as we, as we look at, it, it gives us stability. I think it allows us to give the taxpayers a chance to say that they want to keep services at the current level and lend some stability while we have talks about how we're going to look down the road in the future. But yes, I would, I wouldn't go for an increase for sure, but I would certainly go for renewal.
Mike Webb?
I ditto a lot of what Rick says. It's very good. Without an operating levy, we can't operate. And we're doing a huge disservice to the people of our district if we do not go out for a levy. I would go for renewal at this point in time. And then as the direction of the district evolves into the next, over the next year or so, we can determine whether that levy is going to be needed or not in the future.
Cindy?
I want to go for a increase. If we only look at one factor and, and all the factors that are out there. And the one page that Chief Shick showed us where we're still at the same from 2012 to now was as far as the additional operating levy. In 2012, we ran about 15 to 1700 runs. And in 2021, we're running over three, close to 4,000 runs now. So we have an increase in need in personnel and the cost of living throughout the, that timeframe from almost 10 years. So I think it'd be reasonable to look for an increase.
And what amount are you thinking, Cindy?
I have no idea on that.
Okay. Larry?
I like Director Yesny's comments. It seems like we should finish our strategic planning. You know, as RJ described, we've lost almost $800,000 since I've been a director. And renewing this levy just means we're going to continue to lose money because we haven't changed the way we do business. And if our, if our ambulance district, which is a government district, if it could be run more like a entrepreneurial private ambulance service, it wouldn't even need a tax levy. There are many ambulance districts around the state that cover their own cost of capital. They provide excellent service. They have the same transport needs from the coast up to Central Valley. They cover their own cost of ambulances. They do all this in a private business model that puts shame on us as directors that we can't move this district closer to that efficiency for the sake of our taxpayers. So I would very much like to see us correct the way we do business. Failing that, then we need to find an alternative service model. So if we could fix the way we do business, I could be in favor of some kind of levy, but not right now. We failed this past year to change the way we've been losing money each and every year I've been a director. So to go to taxpayers with a straight face and ask for this to continue where they're going to have increased liability as taxpayers for the deficits of this district and for the purse liability we have, I think is unconscionable. So I think putting a thing on the ballot, putting a measure on the ballot in May is ridiculous. There's been no strategic plan that this board has done other than an update to the 2016 plan. So we're absolutely walking in the dark here.
Thank you, Larry. And if we're going out, I am in favor of just the renewal. But next, with the chief's recommendation of going out in November, that would give us time to do a strategic plan that Larry thinks is really necessary and a lot of other people do, I believe also, before we went out. And then if it truly comes out of the strategic plan that the community wants what we got or we need to put on another ambulance crew, we could change our ballot measure to increase if we thought we needed to. So, directors, I will start with Rick. Are you in favor of the chief's recommendation of going out in November to give us more time to plan? Or not?
Yeah, I like the consult, I mean, I really appreciate consultants' comments on May. I just feel this is way too rushed and would like us to consider combining that polling with our strategic planning, which may take a little bit more time to put that together. I'm concerned, I have to say, I'm very concerned with the price and this is not a budgeted item in our budget. I would like to see that we budget for it next year if we're going to do this and for strategic planning. So I'm, I'm concerned, very concerned about the, I, I'm not comfortable right now with the whole thing. I certainly could get by budget time and think November would be a more appropriate time to go. So I would say November.
Thank you, Rick. Mike Webb?
I, you know, me, I would prefer to have it in June, just or May, just because I would like to know this stability. I think we're getting closer to the edge when we go in November. But there's a lot of positives to the November date where we're going to know a little bit more about the direction of the district. And that will help us decide if we're going to spend $60,000 or $68,000 on a consultant. And we don't get the budget number right or the ballot measure dollar amount right, we're wasting money. We're going to have to go back again. So I think that's a, a vote to go towards November.
Thank you, Mike. Cindy?
I would really like to see if we could at least get the poll done by these consultants so that we know where we stand. And then I could make a better decision. I do agree that we need to have strategic planning and all of these other things put in place. But I would like to know where we stand with the community. And having this pulled down, I think would help us out a lot.
So are you okay with November as of right now?
Grudgingly, yes.
Larry?
I'm in favor of November. I believe that the polling that these gentlemen could provide is really helpful. And I agree with Director Yesny that, you know, if we're going to do a really good job with a strategic plan, we also need to include our employees. And this timeline for May is just too rushed. And I really believe that if we could work with our represented employees and get a business model that is defensible and sustainable, which we don't have right now, that makes everybody happy. You know, it makes the district, you know, viable. And so I see a methodical process to do a strategic plan, engage with our employees about their participation in keeping this a viable district. And then if we must go to the voters, we'll determine what that means at that point.
Thank you, Larry. Chief? A couple of questions for you.
Go ahead.
How, how soon could you get a strategic planning process started?
We've, we've already been talking to Elcock. They're looking at the April timeframe to get things rolling.
And when could we be done? Would we, could we be in done in time to? By the time we adopt our budget?
No. I think the, the treaty plan would be complete. You're probably talking at least June, if not July.
Okay, but we could be done in time to put a ballot measure on for the November election?
Oh, yes.
And how long before you and the committee, you think, can come up with the feasibility plan?
Well, we, the committee has met. We've got, we're going to bring forth a charter to the next board meeting for discussion. And we have a plan, which can be reviewed by the board and they can look at it. It's just enhanced plan of what you've seen before. So the plan is there.
So we would have that before we started a strategic planning process?
Oh, yes.
Board members? So that means if, if we choose to hire a consultant to help us through the levy campaign, we could budget that in our next budget cycle. But then on this survey, do we want to hire the outfit that give us a presentation tonight to do a survey of some type or whatever? Chief, go ahead.
I would expect that Elcock may be able to help. So I'm not saying don't hire them, but it may be an integrated effort from between Elcock and PAC.
And, and Rick, what were your thoughts on in the survey? How did you want to combine and include the strategic plan in the survey, Rick?
Well, I think there's things that we want to ask the community about the direction that we might be headed as far as consolidation and merger. What we look like in the future is a combined service. And maybe, I, I don't know, what I don't know, because I, I just am not that bright is, does that detract from the questions that are asked about the, you know, it's a different question asking about would you support a levy? And then you kind of get off on a separate tangent, but maybe that's okay. I, I defer to Elcock and to our consultants on combining some more questions for the strategic planning into the survey that covers the levy.
So, so chief, with Rick's thoughts, I'm thinking the same way as Rick about, could you maybe come up with a plan for us, chief, chief, excuse me, how to combine our questions? Do we make it a two-part survey in the same mailing? Two short, different surveys? Or what, just the section A and B or something? Could you work on that and get us a recommendation?
Absolutely.
So have I missed anything?
Yeah, I have a question for you. I've had my hand up for about an hour, but we'll just leave it at that.
I'm gonna stay it on the screen.
We did something really cool last time where, but I don't know if the timing is going to work out this time. Last time we had LifeMed going out and we actually used the LifeMed mailers to create a survey. And the survey went to And the survey went to everybody that was, I don't know, a thousand people that were signing up for Life Med. It asked some pretty basic questions. Some of them were, are you aware the district does this or where we do that? We provide this service and where our funds come from, kind of educational. It also asked, would you support a a levy for a building? Would you support a levy for operations, so on and so forth? And that that survey is probably somewhere in file, I would say around two thousand twelve or so within the files or maybe maybe even the later one. And we might be able to get some of the questions off that, but that mailing list worked actually very well. And we did that internally. And we got good response back. So it's something to think about.
Got that, chief?
I'm writing it down.
Thank you.
We also did it at the open house that we held for the district. When they came into the ambulance base. And we were showing them the things we did. We also did a survey there, but of course with COVID, we can't do that open house.
Larry?
So I really like Mike's idea and Cindy's as well. I share Rick's concern about the cost because I can see a real valid reason to spend district money on our strategic plan and polling is is certainly a big part of that. But I'm a little concerned about spending almost the almost the cost of half of an ambulance on a campaign that has underlying tones of voting in favor of the levy. I mean, if if the consultants have told us, we can't do that. We can tell them when the vote is. We can tell them what the district does and that sort of thing. But that's a steep price. Now, you know, the last levy cost us a little over eighteen thousand dollars in in-house costs. And we have a staff and we have, you know, a great website. There are things that we could do as a as an organization besides spending a huge amount of money. And who's to say that it's really sixty thousand if it goes to the ballot box in any election and fails and there's another election, there's another sixty thousand. So I'd hate to think that we were spending money that could go towards services or equipment on just telling people that we're tooting our own horn. I think that's really unnecessary.
Thank you, Larry. So I I truly like the plan of the chief getting the feasibility study done. We roll that into our strategic planning. And we come up with a plan. After we get that done, then the board would discuss levy amount. And if we want to figure out how to do it in-house or pay for help and would be able to maybe put that in the next year's budget. Are we all okay with the timeline? We've kind of rolled out here tonight. Rick, you okay? Mike?
Yeah, but Cindy has her hand up.
On a different screen. Cindy, go ahead, please. Thanks, Mike.
Did you know I had my hand up?
I could see it. I could see it.
I just wanted to point out that the the cost, some of that cost or most of that cost that we spent on the last levy was to a consultant so that we got the right language and we got the information of what we should put on the survey and all that. That was mostly spent on those consultants. So we did very, you know, the, I think they even, Mike, didn't they collect the numbers and give them the results to us too?
Yeah, yeah, they did. They actually generated some good information, but with our internal survey, it we got some good feedback. So
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, troops, I chief, I think we can probably wrap this up. RJ, thank you for participating with us tonight.
Thank you.
Rick Yesny?
I'm waving to RJ.
Oh. Any other comments or things we need to discuss, directors or chief or Dina?
I'm good.
Let's adjourn, chief. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Hi, everybody.